Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or even the law.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna come out. That. That. Or. No. So. Now, it's only have. Yes. It's the. Nope, not now. It's gone. Yes. And both. All right. It's just. I didn't like. Oh, this is. It was my. Yeah. I'm. No. They love. Well, I guess. When I do. When they. I'm here. Yeah. Yeah, come. Good Lord. Move your. There. So. Thank you. I'll wait. We're moving back. But no. So. Don't.
It's just the reemergence of the case, it's not. Is it always this morning? No. Never.
We have two public.
Yeah, the public comment. Totally too public. That's it.
Okay.
So.
So.
That's.
I know. Mayor. Yeah. First one. Not yet.
Question, question please. I'd like to leave. To the United States of America. And to. A rigid stance. One nation. We're all. A reasonable majority and justice. Again, a motion, which up. Son of.
Well, that's. He said agenda. Hi, sir.
It's been moved in second. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carries. Okay, the department reports. Public works. All right. One. Everybody's mics wrong. No. The reports are in your packets. Any questions for public works? Nothing? Hello, sir, Mike?
Well, yeah, I do have one thing to add. Randy's budget ran out today. It's all done now until we figure out how to bring him back on. I don't know where the extra stimulus money is at. But. I was notified this morning that this budget is done. So. If there's a way that we can figure out. How to do it, I know there's some money in streets, but I don't know. What I can use for wages and what I can't do is Jill's out. So until we talk to her. We'll set. I'll have to. Kevin can answer some questions, no?
I have a question.
Yes.
When. Is the electrical. Install. Hook up for the host installed?
Supposed to be this week. I haven't seen it over there yet.
Okay.
We've been working on this side.
Okay.
So. Everything's there except for his fifty ounce, it's bull crap.
Okay, all right, and do we know when he's coming in? We have an idea?
We're hoping pretty soon, he's thinking maybe next week. He wants to get a stripper over, so I just thought it might. He's been doing some weed eating. He's gonna maybe do some mowing tomorrow. So it's kind of nice, he's not even there yet. So.
And my other question is, the gate, we know when the gate is going to be put up?
Uh. Yes, for the exit, yeah, hopefully tomorrow, but we still have a little painting to do, so I'll have to help Randy here. Join me that. So hopefully I can do that tomorrow. So. Yeah.
Mike, just one other question, is everything else ready for Tuesday?
I'm gonna do some trimming, some trees and some, there's some fresh on South Road stuff, I gotta turn up.
Just minor stuff?
Yeah. Try to get as good as we can before Tuesday.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
There's chairs up here in the front.
Yeah.
There's three of them up here.
Mike, you lose, you lose.
I, yeah.
You can move onto the back if you want.
All right, real quick, everything's going well. In regards to Tuesday's. The city council, that finds approved. John and come down, help us with the take care. And we have any more problems about, right?
Not so far, not.
Okay, good. And then, real quick, I think I'm gonna talk about Eric, something that we've done over here. If you got any other sign laying around, we part of post the night before, that'd be great. Other than that. Well, I'm gonna turn to my staff, so. But. She brought me one of that, and said that one definitely gonna be helping out. So I'll also talk to Winlock, maybe they'll come over and help out as well. So. Officer, I'll make a number out of some point.
Okay. I want a order.
Thank you. Okay. To the mayor, the city council, along with the community of Toledo. I'm writing this letter to inform you that I've been given by two week notice for Toledo Police Department as patrol officer. My last official day, July fifteenth. I've accepted a conditional offer from Naperville Police Department as patrol officer studying on the road patrol of July nineteenth. This is intended to be a career decision for myself as I move forward into law enforcement career. I would not have been able to receive this offer from Naperville Police Department without my opportunity here in Toledo. Although sure, I'm honored to have been hired by Toledo Police Department. As the city of Toledo has shown the small town cop style work that I've never experienced before. And I do not plan on changing this nature of work for a long time. I have no complaints against the city of Toledo, the community and staff that I've been privileged to serve. As future events take place, my hope is down the road, there will be some decisions made. To where I have the opportunity to not only apply what I've learned while working in city Toledo. But also to keep building positive relationships with all parties involved. Thank you all for what you have done. So, mayor, here's a copy.
Absolutely.
No, thanks, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Any questions or concerns from the city council, please contact me directly. Any questions?
No comment. Thank you for the time you have been so visible in community and schools.
Yeah.
And that you've done.
And I really do mean that, that letter that decisions are made moving forward from events that have been taking place. I look forward to continuing that dramatically. Thank you, thank you, Kevin, appreciate it.
I know the kids in the grade school appreciate you coming down once a week.
Yeah.
I think I look forward to that.
I've been talking.
I'll be more than schoolwork, I'm sure.
Talking to the. Giving me the thumbs up to do that for Naperville when I go over there. And like I said, recent events take place. He gave me thumbs up to do the exact same thing.
Okay, so, thanks, Lord.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on to the first report. So on your program, if there are any questions for her. Please do so now, we ask. Anything? Here we go.
Did we get copies of the financial data that was sent from the city of Naperville?
Not yet.
Any other questions for the board?
Well, the question I had, she already answered it, I mean, all about the good thing. So should I still include when you check?
Yeah.
Couple days ago.
Yeah, I checked on Thursday.
I. And we're waiting to know any of the last asking in my. Right.
Any other questions? Can you, the president's report is on your reports also, you guys. Unfortunately, she's not here. I don't know. Devin, is there any other? Questions that you can possibly answer on her behalf? Okay.
What question is?
Any questions?
Oh, that was the financial.
Okay. Nothing? We're fair, let's move on. I can lose all the department reports, committee reports, park board. Foundation mission, why, sure, nothing. Public hearing, six year transportation program. This is the plan for the public to speak on that, if you guys have read any of that, I don't know that. It's covered in our new business, my kind of player. Go along. Nothing from the public. How about the branch request?
Are your agendas and meetings and how they posted on your website?
Yes.
The next one for public hearing is France's request. The property's LLC slash KR Homes. So we can ask any questions on that right now.
Lot to them.
Pardon me?
Lots of questions.
We'll ask.
On that.
So. There you have it.
We're beyond camera.
We're beyond camera.
And it's. Lots of answers. Oh, the six.
Different room, probably.
Yeah, I don't know. What's going on with this, but I do know on that property. A year ago, there was. This. Bill Creek used to run down through town. And in nineteen forty, the reason. I don't know the exact date, but it's in the forties. The United States government, the town of Toledo. Moved that stream and go this way. And there's supposed to be six inches of water run through. At all times there. But as far as, I don't know, I guess they want to build a house or something, I think. I forgot the EPA thing, but they're gonna have to look into it. And that's all wet ground, and I don't think anybody can build up, in a variance. Probably not from the town of Toledo, but. There is one. Allowed the transfer. For the creek. And I don't know what fisheries were involved somehow with it either, because. The fish uses pond. And the old wooden bridge you go across, there's a wooden track. But that's, I think, several of the here are neighbors there wondering. What the variance and why they're gonna get a break if. They can build it, which I don't think they can.
It looks like they have fairly good. Good tilt to put a small house on. Like it's one thousand.
My understanding is they can't dig anything out there, and I have no one to build the store. Downtown, the new store. They filled that, you know, with all the rock to come out there, so I don't know if they had a variance to fill that in. But I think if you look it up, that's considered all wet ground from. Where is that, St. Helens, next street up, St. Helens, silver. To. The ridge on this side, and you can't even put a road across.
It goes right behind the old dog doucks. Building right there that comes.
Yeah, that's one of the creeks that run down through.
Still got this concrete stuff right here.
Yeah, and there's supposed to be six inches by law according to what we studied. Because we had a drowning off of that, I don't know, you remember the gates? And we had to go clear back and. Looked that all up, see what's supposed to be done there and how, and there's supposed to be a screen there. You know, nobody here about to get beat out of their ears following the floor. Some of the local kids used to slide down it, so. Ed Gordon being one of them. So. As far as building on that, I think somebody somewhere down the line told somebody profit, they can't build.
So the Lewis County GIS does not show that as a wetland. Or even hydro, and there is no stream up there, they don't, they don't show a stream there at all.
They probably don't know that, they didn't go, this is all done in the forties.
The variants are asking for the setback parents, so they're not asking, they're not even to the point where they're getting building.
Yeah, and I don't think they can build it, I mean. I hate to see somebody build it and the government say, hey. And somebody told my wife that is wetland.
Yeah, you can bring up the Lewis County GIS pretty easy, and I thought I would like to show you the wetlands and the. Hydro soil and where the streams at.
Because I totally couldn't fill it in, because.
But.
And it's. It, that, that wet part ends. Right at his, at the lower end of his property. And this house is only on the upper half. By.
What's on, what's on the other side of the. Silver Street does. Because you can't build a street through there. I mean, we looked it up.
We don't even have, we can't get water and sewer to there.
Yeah.
There's no water and sewer line there either.
On.
So is that parcel? On, bump it uphill. On Silver Street. There's no water and sewer lines that go down through there.
Do you want a picture of the parcel? I have it.
We have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you though.
So we have it here too, Danny, don't worry about it.
So is there water and sewer on the one that faces Second Street?
Water and sewer lines are right, only on Second Street. Same hell.
And if they say. It's what they will have been, they have, they are putting the water sewer lines.
Yes.
We do not.
And they don't have.
And they have to put a booster pump or whatever is required, and it's all on there.
When they go to Second or when they go to Fourth?
It's whatever public works decides they want them to do.
But I think it's something that needs to be investigated.
If that's wetlands, if that's wetlands and you couldn't fill anymore to extend your boundaries.
No.
I don't know how. They can fill to, or whatever, because I, I saw one of the orange states described by the guys garage up on top of the hill.
Well, yeah.
I hate like.
Yeah.
That's the old ad.
You guys know neighbors like those?
Which is also.
No, that's why I bought the place, because they weren't that close to it.
I've got the lot right next to it, and I don't want.
Well, let's, let's have everybody kind of say a piece right now, now you're done.
Yeah, I just was saying, and as far as vacated feet between my house and my shop, that alley there is supposed to be vacant. And on the old map, before Mayor Grub took control. That's the old map, oh, yeah, all vacant.
Okay. You want to draw?
Let's see.
Just send your name, send your name and try to speak into the. Playing microphone right there. Okay. And where do you live?
Two five one. Um. Part of the reason we bought that place is because there was that, we didn't think you could build back there. And that's what we were told, that's probably why we didn't proceed with buying, but yeah, we don't want neighbors that close. Especially with that alleyway having to stay open. That pretty much takes everything back there away from us, so.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had it open, look at that alleyway at one time, it was coming out on the.
Right.
Silver Street.
Yes.
Have to look at that.
Yeah. The.
Where the vacuums are.
I think so.
And we were told. We were told that we could not put a fence up, and it needed to have access through there.
I remember looking.
Yeah, and so we, we kept that as open, but it didn't, you could see back there. That pretty much takes everything.
Yeah, I saw the state was, that's right.
It's right up, yeah, and if you've got to have. A decent amount on each side, as the gentleman stated before. What, I mean, come on, that, we don't have that.
I know.
So. Yeah. It, it would really limit us.
Thank you.
And.
It's the only this.
The set walk is in the back.
Right.
Yeah.
From there.
It's following down.
That's a question.
Send your name and we.
I'm handling the shade for two sixty fourth street. And as we own the lot behind this, we just walk right next to.
Okay.
This lot. And they say in here, they were requesting to build within seven feet of the property line instead of ten. And my opinion is that when they purchased the land, they knew it was ten feet, that's what was stated. If they didn't like it, they shouldn't have purchased the land. And on the pictures here, it shows how. This Viola's property across the street doesn't have any buildings on it either. And on up, it doesn't have any buildings, and we were led to believe this whole time. That that property could be built on, that it was a waterway, and there was supposed to be water even coming through the creek. And that's why we bought the property behind us, because we just, you know, there wasn't going to be anything next to that. That would be a nice little parkway area for all of us. So.
Was there a statue on the books? That told you?
You know, when I first looked this up, I was able to get topographical map, I was able to get the map that measures by feet and everything else. Because our property drops off really sharply. And there, where the easement is for the road to go through. The hill is so steep, it's causing our property to fall down the hill. And we had to come in and build up terraces on the embankment to keep our property, the hill from sloughing down. And then, we couldn't on the on. Over. Because that's county property, but. The back of my yard is falling down, and if they're over there building stuff, it's just gonna really destroy the back of that. And the integrity of the embankment and everything. And. We had. I'm, I can't pull up those maps now, I don't know if they changed the flat site or not. But when I had first pulled them up about ten years ago, when we bought the property. It did signify in that area. As a, a waterway. So. That's it, I don't want them building. The seven feet up, it states ten feet, if they're gonna build something, keep it at ten feet. If they didn't like the ten feet, they shouldn't have bought the property.
See, I can move out of the four oh one Silver Street on the corner of Silver Street. And one of my concerns, that's kind of different than all of this, is the city right away for the street. Is how wide through there, you know, to me, it's my sidewalk, your city sidewalk, that city rock right where you continue that all the way up to this street. As wide as the road is there, so does their property take in that right way, or does that count as their square footage? To me, if that road's thirty feet or like it's supposed to be, that really narrows up their strip of property.
Yeah, it does.
And my concern is, a lot of people don't realize how busy that street is. That's the post office traffic. You know, rips through there and there. If there are forced out traffic out on the street, the parking and stuff like that, and your kids. I just think it's a dangerous situation you're asking for problems, so.
Okay, so I did, our six year plan, we've got three plans in here for new sidewalks. One was on five oh five. On the church or the assembly god, five, five foot sidebar, for kids' safety and crossing the street there. So I understand your sidewalk situation, and we're gonna try and do more sidewalks, but for kids' safety, walking to school and everything like that. Which we did down there on Sixth Street, and we also put in a stop light, so kids can push the light, go across to the great school. We're working on all these issues, but you're right, that sidewalk's gonna take up a lot of that property.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
The sidewalk gets removed.
The sidewalk gets removed from the street?
Yeah. So that, that property line should be at their exact property line, and the sidewalk will be outside of them.
Or it will be out into the street. Is that their front of street, so they have a twenty five foot setback from Silver Street down?
I'm not sure how, how the front of the house is determined on a street. Kevin, do you know?
The front of the faces. So.
So when we built our shop, we were told Silver Street was our front.
Can you come up? When you done?
Sorry. Tony News, I live across the street from Silver. For a longer second. And I was, I was just curious about property line. The variance, and I now know the variance what you're asking for is on the backside, it's where your guys. Property. And I was just curious if Silver Street is considered their front of property then? From that property line back by your guys', you know, by the city ordinance, that's supposed to be a twenty five foot setback. Maybe it's fifteen.
It's fifteen, yeah, it's on the front, so it's a twenty five all in.
Yeah.
And that's a fifty foot wide lot, so they're gonna net fifty, or twenty five feet.
Yeah, okay, so, I, that was, that was really all I was curious about is where the, where the setbacks were and where the front of street was.
Did you see the stakes that they got in there?
I know where the property lanes are, I have my property survey, so I know where it goes straight across the road.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think two states that are in, one closer to the world than one. That. That helps. Or.
I think it's. It takes away from that alley.
Yeah.
Takes almost a whole alley in.
Right.
To their garage, I just saw, I just saw the stage where it put, I go, geez.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me? And there, there's also alley, there's alley.
I can.
Okay, over here. I'm saying. We gotta move on.
Yeah.
Anywhere public.
Anywhere public?
I sign that.
Go ahead.
I just started on this.
No, I'll make it quick.
We just, we got. Alice. Red on here up. Second street.
Yes. Okay.
My concern is, is just gonna, is gonna be apartment, residential? Or are they gonna put on that?
You don't know, well, I don't.
Single family.
I'm not gonna ask for very good. Is that lot, is there gonna be excavation on that lot? Because if they start cutting until the hill goes lead level, who's ever pulling that above that?
That's not true, that's.
I, I own. This way, they own the that way.
And they're gonna do some leveling there, and then cut the top of that hill. You're fine.
And now my concern is, I won't be able to get to my property without driving right over the creek.
Well, that's some of the concerns I have. And the other, I think, one of that is, Phil, some of that, Phil.
Yeah.
Did they do a geosurvey on it, see if they will mount the villa house?
I don't know, it's on. It was forty five years, by all county church.
Well, I think if you do approve the building. Sort it out, make sure it's stable enough.
Thank you, but I know if they start cutting into that.
I want that. So that one, you can't get to the empty lot.
And you come in the alley.
If you come on the high road, it's too steep to drive down.
Okay, we got it. Any other public comments on that?
One more comment I'd like to make.
We got a couple of them.
He's got a bad aim.
Yeah.
Dan Walsh, I know. Three twenty one story.
There you go. Yep.
My suggestion is on that to the council to go back to the city council meeting, I can't remember how long that was on the council. It did, that'll all be down in a minute from that. Impact thing, we had to do the.
Okay.
On that down again, be all in a minute.
Okay.
Hopefully.
We'll search for Erica.
It's a long time ago, because I was in elementary school. Wow.
Shirley.
I'm just trying to give you an estimate of where to go. On some, some.
Actually.
Shirley.
Okay, no more public input, I hope.
Actually, I have a question. I know we have the variants before us. Have they, have they already submitted for the building permit? But that has not been approved.
Does that have to go to the planning commission?
This has to be done first.
This has to be done for.
Done.
Okay.
Yes.
Answer your question.
It does.[1770.18]
All righty, then let's move on. Special presentation, we have been public comment on agenda items. So here we go again. Any more public comment on agenda items? Agenda items. Do you have an agenda report upon it? No?
No, I got something else.
Okay. No more public comment, and let's move on to the new business.
I have a question with the.
Jamie, you're supposed to jump in when you're done, Daniel.
You know, I got a lot of them on here.
Okay, what's up?
The building went out late. Did you account for that for the due date? So everybody receiving it was late, could potentially be late.
They have the whole month to pay it, and all they went out like a day or two late. If it's an extended period, then yes, we're going to make that time. Like if we had snow or ice last winter, and they couldn't break meters, then it was. But if it's a day or two, then no, we don't.
New business, I'll require St. Helen's Street. Discussion. You can make a motion and we'll discuss it. Okay.
I'm making a motion that we denied this request for a refund of $5,250.19.
It's been moved in seconds. We do all that, Kevin? Discussion.
So this $2,880 on that total, is that what, what was paid to, to get an estimate of the value of the property and have that?
That's what the appraisal was.
But didn't he pay for the appraisal?
Yeah, he paid for all of it.
Yeah. I disagree with that. I think, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we're not out anything one way or the other. We're not out fees, the city didn't have to pay for anything. He paid us the money for the section that we vacated. It doesn't work for him. He paid all the upfront fees. He can't use the property. The city gets back what the city already has. The city gets back, nothing's been filed, nothing's been recorded with Lewis County yet.
That's why I bring up the $2,880 is because.
I don't know why I count my debt.
But it's, it's double his money back because it has included $2,800.
I get that, but he should, but he, if he paid that amount, I thought the amount that he, that he was requesting back.
Is the whole thing. I mean, I can see the, I can see that 1319 square footage. I can see the 750 fee that we, he paid us definitely.
Yeah.
So.
I think he should get his money back minus, I mean, he paid the fees, we'll pay him. I think we should give him back what he paid for the, for the section of property that we vacated.
I'm making a motion, we amend. Well, that's how you do that, is that you make an amendment, amended motion. Making a motion that we amend to pay back his fees portion, uh, and not the other costs. So that would be the. That'd be the 1319 and the 750.
What I'm seeing on the request is $5,350.19.
Yes.
Which is the bottom line.
Which is the bottom line.
Well, I see, I see that 1319 as what he paid for the appraisal, right? That came out of his pocket.
He paid the.
He paid the 1319.
Oh, hold on, I mean, I drive those backwards? No. Market value determined on 10/11, Kevin, is that?
That's the appraisal value of the property.
Oh, okay. And then what's the 1319?
For, he had, that was for the additional footage on St. Helen's of what it's worth.
So also both of those numbers are, are fees he paid us for square footage of city land?
The 2,813.
Okay, so I will completely dismiss that.
Okay.
So there was a total of $5,350.
Yeah, that's what he has paid.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what we're discussing.
I see, so it's the 750 is the appraisal fee.
Yeah, that was just the fee to have it done.
So Eric, where's your amendment?
Uh, I, I would alter my amendment to basically the fees that he's paid us. I, I, I'm not sure about fees that went out that, you know, we had to pay for. I don't know that.
We didn't pay for any of that.
We're right, but, but if we returned all the money, we would be paying for the appraisal.
Yes. I think we should give him back what he paid for the property minus the fees that he paid.
So I restate my amendment.
For public hearing notices and newspaper notices and recorded documents and those kinds of fees. I mean, I know, that's sad day, but we can't undo that, but we could give him back the majority of, I think, I mean.
The money the city took in, is what I'm amending to say, but not, not part of the process.
David, go ahead.
All right, well, the reason I asked for the 5,300 is because that's what, so I can divide the problem, you know, make it big enough to make two lots. You guys all know that.
Right.
That's what it costs. I mean, that's a fraction of what I got. That's what I can get back, I think, for you guys legally without, you know, in the water and all that. I'm just asking for that part of the refund in full, because I was led down this road by, so, you know, you guys all know that, up here.
Did you retain any outside comments to tell you, inform you what you need to know?
Before I paid you guys or after?
I would say.
The only people I worked with was Michelle, the mayor, and Mike.
Actually, again, that's not.
That's, well, those are the people, those are the authorities of the city. I walked out, looked at what I'm doing, and said, yeah, you can do this, you can do that.
But you didn't hire somebody to advocate for you.
Or do I? I did talk to a, I talked to a civil engineer, and he, like he told me, he said that this, he made, he made it sound like Toledo had more power than he would the city. I didn't have to buy it. But we can't let you build a house that's going to be down there. I owe it to the future. Now, right, yeah. Okay, I'm asking, and you can say no, you know. I got led down this path of thinking I have two free clear lines. Did everything for a year and a half, this 5,300 is a fraction of the total investment I have all this time. And no, I didn't. I went with what Michelle told me. The mayor looked at it, Mike looked at it more than once on what to do, how to go about it, everything they said. And when it came down to the very end, I was pretty much denied. This is a fraction.
So, let me beat the devil up here. I bought a used car. I didn't bring it to my channel, I didn't check it out. And so I had problems with this reason, Mike had to pay it because the shop cost more money. Now I can't go back to that cell and say, you need to take responsibility for this, because it was on my responsibility to make sure.
Were you here, are you here? When you did this process, when I asked about the first vacate, last, I bought the second vacate, and the third, it's like negative, they got to make two lots, being part of that process.
No, I'm not.
Well, I'm just asking because I'm not buying a used car. I was talking to the city officials that can make these decisions and letting them guide me through the process. So I don't even, there's no comparisons. So if you would have been on that, you would have been at the meetings where I was here asking for what I was asked for, having math diagrams. And then it all came up to the end, and I had, it wasn't going to happen. You know, I, what else can you do?
Again, I'm saying, you should have had your own house. The, the city is not here to advocate for you. We're here to serve the public, but not necessarily.
Okay, well, then they stepped out of bounds.
I, 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 my question is, you're not told that you can't build on that property, am I correct? But you're told that in order to do so, you have to have a geological survey, and you're not willing to go.
Well, there's roads, there's roads. Okay, so when I started this, Michelle told me that 12 feet tall, I needed to bring all my utilities in there. Mike was out there with DJ's plumbing, spray painted the line. It was going to happen. And then at the very last minute, they asked me to do a survey. So I got a survey.
Who asked you?
Michelle.
Okay.
Michelle asked me to do a survey. We got a survey, and that's when we realized the boundary was planned, we all screwed up. So then I bought the first piece of property from you guys, so I can move my boundary or get the boundary line adjusted. So, because the building is built straddling the two lots.
So you didn't have a survey before all of that?
No, I did it right before we were going to do it. Heard the city. So in that process, then you guys changed your lot size to 4,000 square feet. So Michelle's like, well, I can just make two lots out of it. And I said, well, if I can buy these properties, you know, I don't make it big enough, and it's doable to do that. And that's what happened.
So you could still build on it if you had the survey and the survey came back okay?
No, you need, you need to do it their extent. You need to build.
No, I mean, that's, I'm sorry, I was going to ask you, if you had a geological survey done and that paid back.
Possibly, yeah, yeah. And then you got a wide rose. Because it's only 12 feet, you got 120 now. It's been told a couple times that 12 feet is fine. But now it's not. I think that with a single dwelling, it would have a, you would be considered a flat lot, and then 12 feet would be fine. So the rows aren't an issue. Not if you don't make that street to it, I wouldn't.
David, how much, how much reference of geological survey are you going to cross?
They, okay, so I talked to a couple different people, and it's probably between $5,000 and $10,000. And the reason why is because nothing was ever, there's still there, and nobody knows what's, it was never done. So they, they wanted to realize. You know, this gets to a point where it's like, yeah, I'm getting out, I'm done. I got a year and a half to make about it. I'm asking for a small fraction of that. It felt like I was led down this road. I did buy his car. I went through the process with the city, with all the officials, to do the right thing. It didn't work out.
But you also didn't pay $5,000 to $10,000 for a geological survey.
No, I got way more than that.
I understand that.
Right, right. But it's like, see, that's the thing, you get to a point where you realize, this is not worth it. It's way out of bounds. If, I was told this at the very beginning, I would have tried. Never even, I, right? Paperwork, you know, I was under the assumption, I was done, I was getting my two lots. That was it. It wasn't, it just began. It was the very.
Definitely asking for a lot of investment is not approval to go, I mean, that's like.
Yeah, I know, but when you're led down the road that you're going to get to.
Yeah, I hear, I, I hear what you're saying.
Where's, where's your amendment at?
I'm amending that we, uh, would pay back the fees that was paid to city protocol plan and any other fees that came to us.
Kevin, is that the $5,000 toll? $5,350.19.
Well, but some of that went to other places, I'm assuming. Some of it went, I mean, some of it went to the assessor's office, some of it went to, they didn't come to the city. He's saying, let's pay it back the money that came to us.
We, we paid it.
You paid it out? Okay.
What's your amendment?
But if you pay him back, then we're out the money that we paid.
To Lewis County assessors and all those places, they're not going to reimburse you. That's what we're saying. So you had to pay, you had to pay fees to file, uh, the county, to pay fees.
For it, like, we paid it to the county, and then we billed him for it, and then he paid it, so.
And what she's saying is, we paid it out, the city paid it out, and we're not going to get it back. Does that make sense? We already paid it. We give him his money back. If we give it all back to him, then we pay fees for nothing. Yeah, that's what she's saying.
I'm saying, I'm saying we don't make any money out of him ourselves. So all the money that he, that came into the city that we intended to keep for the property and for any fees internally, we give that back, which I think is the bulk of it.
I second that.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any more discussion on it?
Yeah, can you, can you tell me what the cost to the city was?
Our hours? I don't know, because I don't know how, it's been, we've been working on it for over a year. So, but the, the appraisal outweigh. We, the city did not pay for any.
We paid it, he paid us back after we do.
Yeah, so it is now wanting all of that back, but we've already paid
the appraisers. So that isn't cost outweighed us. Because if we're taking it out of our pocket, give it back to him, we paid for that.
But she's saying he was billed that amount already.
That's what she's asking then.
But there's still money at an external agency that will reimburse.
Right, the city took in $4,199. The rest of it went to other people.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, right, if I add up the 2,880 and the 1399.
And the rest of that, newspaper, county.
To keep on with it.
So you, you just want it for a $4,000. There it is. The market value and then the additional survey. Right.
Yeah.
Those are the.
Has that already been filed with?
So that's, yeah. So you're saying 40,99, 42.
Yeah. So.
Also, documents haven't been sent to recording yet.
No, not yet, no.
So we're sitting on that money?
Yet we have to be. If they haven't been sent, it hasn't been paid.
Yeah.
Then yes. That should go back to us as well, yeah. So I have $2,560.60.
And what is the difference between that, $5,350.19? I'm just trying to. For a few dollars more. Well, we're about to, right? Kevin has a poll, $27,000.
$947.17.
So. So you're amending that we pay him $4,405.2.
And we've discussed it a lot, we need to move on. No, let's move on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of course. Motion carries.
If the original gets morphed into, gets packaged, and I know, right, I agree all that stuff.
Okay, moving on, resolution 258, adopt the rule 66 year transportation plan, that was in your packet. 258, resolution for all the planning for the next six years, all the streets and sidewalks and all that. Anyway, I need a motion to adopt this.
I'm making a motion that we adopt the new six-year transportation plan.
Oh, second that?
It's been moved in seconds. Any more information, any more discussion? A six-year plan? Cause, move on it.
Do you have public comment on this?
No.
Do we have?
We did.
Public comment comes later.
No, because there's, there's public hearing.
At the beginning.
Well, I was just going to say, when they redid the Augusta Street going to the great school, don't put rock in there like you did there. That is terrible to maintain, and it's a safety hazard for kids walking.
That's a good point.
I mean, you know.
They're going to walk on rocks. They're gonna walk on rocks where.
So fall, yeah, because it's both down.
Okay, sorry.
So, so these funds have been paid or are secured?
This is just a six year plan here. There's nothing, no funds, no, no way.
So setting our goals.
It's our wish list for next six years.
I was saying that we have plans, this is for anyone.
We can get grants, we can get all kinds of help, you can help us with that.
Okay.
So it's just a plan, we have, we have to submit a six year plan of our future, that we don't know anything what's gonna happen. But anyway, at least we're trying to get money and stuff to fix these sidewalks and streams for safer kids. That's our, that's our major plan. Okay, any other discussion on resolution? We have a motion on the floor and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, number three, variance application. Eaton Companies LLC, K R Homes. Oh, any motion on that?
Well, I'll make the motion. Oh, let me think about it. We have to have a motion to win, you have a discussion. So.
Or don't have a motion, let it quiet. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Really tough, it's really tough, cause I have been very strong on, on the rights of property, I understand people don't want houses next to them, but. You gotta imagine, if you own that property and somebody's gonna say, you can't build there because I don't want a house next to me, I, that's really tough. I understand that.
Is this in regard to the variance?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, I think that, no, it's, I'm not saying they can't build, right? I'm saying they knew that it was within ten feet of the property line when they bought the property. Don't give them the variance, don't make it seven feet within the property, they knew it was ten. And if they didn't like it, they shouldn't have bought it.
So if we left it at ten.
So what determine?
If we left it at ten, then they couldn't build.
No, they can build, they just can't.
They still put them on top of me, I, I mean.
Ten feet, yeah.
I, I get that.
We gotta go by these boundaries that we need this certain amount.
But if they go, but if we don't give them a variance and they follow, and they follow, they follow all the boundaries and all the setbacks and they can still build a home there. There's, we can't tell, yeah, they can't tell them, but we can't tell them, sorry, you can't build a house there, cause your neighbors don't like it. Just tell them, sorry, they can't, I'm just saying, can't, sorry, just don't make variance.
Devin, why?
They're following the rules.
Why? Their, their, their front door is on the corner there, why are, why is Silver being declared their front street?
That's where the front door faces.
Yeah.
So their front door must be on this wall.
Literally, they could put their front door on the other side of that wall and there's a face.
And they have, whether their front door is faced well.
Because of the neighbors, it's a time increase, so that's gonna go, so. And their door faces this way and doesn't even face Ash Street.
I think they should just try harder, I'm gonna make a motion that we do not give them the variance, that we, that we turn this down.
I was second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? None?
So. So we give, uh, alley variances and that type of thing, and we've possibly given variances for others, so. What, what is the reasoning here that?
Because then the neighbor next to them does not want them three feet closer and, and as much as I honor their. Property rights, I also honor, honor the neighbor's property rights, I think they should do is declare their address thirty-three and be done with it.
And having gone to go and look at the actual site, it's real tight.
Oh, they were, they're gonna be tight.
Real tight, and it's like.
South.
I know, that's what I'm saying, plus, plus. Yeah, let's, let's hold over, try again one more time, please, this is pretty possible. Last stakes, I just looked at, twenty minutes, half an hour ago, was right in their backyard, right up against their garage.
Is that property line?
I'm sure there's a property line.
Oh, yeah, that's it, that would be the alley.
That's the alley, right.
That would be on the alley, up hillside.
There's an alley right up on the hill, past his place, right across from his house.
Twelve feet down from those stakes that are up their garage, where the property, should be, cause there should be a twelve foot alley.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, that's how it was when we got, when we bought the place, the, the stakes were moved back. Because you couldn't build there, he said, and that's how he explained it to me. He said the stakes are up here, but they don't make any, you know, he says they have to be back here.
But it's a ninety-eight by fifty piece of land, you can definitely build a house on it. Honestly, it's, just put the front door on third street and you've got thirty-five feet of setback. And the problem is it's gonna make, but I, I have actually, I didn't today, but I have actually been by there when the last issue was going on with driveway and.
They can't cut it, yeah.
There actually are, it's, the picture I have of where they want the piece to sit is down the hill. It's on the, it's on the west side. Cause I've lived it for forty-four years. Actually, I'm definitely not approving them to build there.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But then doesn't that go back to being wetlands again?
It used to be.
Right, I, see, again, my property behind it, how am I gonna get to it down there to do anything down there?
You can't.
It'll be right up.
You can't.
Cause we basically take care of that.
Yeah.
A whole lot, more than it.
Well, you couldn't fill it anymore because you were told it was wetlands anymore.
Yeah, I can't fill in my, my house.
That's what I'm saying, can't fill any, kind of, out, cause we're still concerned on a wetland and a six inch crack that goes through there already.
Like I said, you just need to go back, either go to the old. Minutes and look it up when we had to go through that grounding. Cause kids drowned and their diet and river, that's why we had to go. And it was quite an extended process, and it went to their maximum, the government, eight, uh, the county, United States, those. Chain, built as a body of water, yes.
Can you find that meeting date by the date that kid died?
Well, they'd have to go back, uh.
Certainly, I think just got from the mayor.
It's no longer a body of water, so it's federal government, it's out of the picture. You know, there must be six inches of water, right, at all times. And there's no water in, in the summer. There is a six inch pipe by the Baptist Church.
There's water, there are.
There is definitely one.
Yeah, that is right, enough to, not, not six inches of water.
Okay.
But for us, but before us to, right now. Is only question, are we going to allow them to build within? Seven feet of that rear line of property or keep it at ten?
Yes, as long as that's the rear line, but now, I'll tell you what, if that doesn't become the rear line, it becomes a sidewalk, it's gonna be five. So we're gonna turn down seven and you're gonna end up with five.
Eric, this is the one, where is the street?
Yes, yes.
What are you talking about?
Well, this here's our front now.
Well, they're not, yeah, cause I'm.
Yeah, they won't go that far.
Right? The only way they could vote for it, so.
That almost doesn't apply, because this.
Twelve feet off the street, so.
Is the diagram, and this is the, seven versus ten is, right, from here to the rear.
Yes, that's the person now, was the, was that he's.
Which is, go from ten down to seven.
And that's the only thing for us right now.
And a motion was made exactly, that they have to, with the tip, with the tip, with the tip being set back.
And what they do.
It's not now.
Okay.
Do you need to repeat yourself, trying to tell them, you're looking around the bend?
I am looking around the bend, I'm saying, if, if they redesign their house such that this property that's listed in the county as zero third street and declare third street is my front. Then, then your, your connection with them will have a five foot setback instead of ten. Because the city ordinance is ten feet on a backyard and five feet on side yards. So can they, can they list that as their address when they're on a street there? I was told I couldn't, I have no idea, that would actually be up to.
Yeah, there's little.
Honestly, I don't know why they didn't ask us to reduce eighteen feet, that's, cause I would say yes, I would have said yes.
So. Was those street footings coming out over the creek?
They would just have.
Yeah, they can't build.
They would have, they can't come out, but ask for a different request.
Variance, twelve feet off the front, so, seven feet off of that, yes.
Then if we're talking.
According to the vacated street. Third street goes right down the middle, the mill creek.
Yes, and, and the, the picture I see puts their driveway right on that property line. So whether you drove your car and honestly.
Yeah, it's within their parcel.
Yeah. What is?
The driveway, it's within their parcel.
The street on the.
No, their driveway is within their parcel and not.
Their parcel, according to their diagram.
Yeah.
So the driveway is on their property?
Yes. Yeah, it's on their property.
That's what he doesn't know, yeah, so.
It doesn't touch the alley or suppose whatever's in the middle.
I, I on their property? I finish one, three on the property.
Doesn't touch the alley, or wanna drop that? There is a mill.
Would you like to hear from the property owners for asking the parents, assess, with any questions they have, if they're not, if they're not, has problems with your dad's, hold on, answer questions that I'm getting stressed, because clearly there's. An issue, would like to, just if you'd like to hear from us.
Right, come on.
I was just gonna say that they are here, the people that wanna build the house, and we're just trying to build a nice quality stick to build house. That fits on this property, and it's a legal lot, and we want it to serve and fit into the community. I live in Toledo, I love it here, trying to build a really nice quality house. What's that?
According to the way that's laid there. And when the creek was moved, I don't think it's actually legal, that's what it needs to go back to the government and see before you.
Yeah, so that's, that's one issue, I mean.
Yeah, that's a, that's an issue there.
Yeah. But, uh, from the way I see it, and all the due diligence that I've done, it's legal law, we can build on it. And we'd like to build on it, we'd like to build a nice, quality, thick-built, affordable home that fits into the community. Um, I believe it's a very nice plan, somebody, some family will love it.
Um, I very much appreciate that, that's why I'm trying to support it.
And I see, the thing that bothers me about Toledo, they see manufactured homes going all over, and why are we putting manufactured homes? If I had something to complain about, that's what I would.
Why?
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 It's not a board.
It is.
Go try to buy one. Have you called them up and tried to buy one? Try it, try it.
Yes.
Yeah, call them up, and you wanna buy one, and they'll sell you a cheap one, has two by four walls, it don't have four, or they'll give you one that, uh.
You can buy a better quality home for that.
Hang on. You can buy a low quality, uh, manufactured home that is cheap. You can buy a good quality manufactured home that's the same quality as what we build, two by six walls, good insulation, HVAC, full, full entire. It's not any cheaper.
A lot of people prefer.
So, well, everybody has a personal preference, I'm not here to say that, and that's fine, then.
Danny?
The GIS doesn't indicate it.
Oh, oh, oh. I have a question. If we were to deny moving the rear setback. To seven, and keeping that at ten. Is there a possibility that the front setback from Silver Street could, instead of fifteen feet, could be twelve feet?
Absolutely, I'm just trying to make the word as best possible, I'm not trying to deny anybody's.
Is, so that would, that would make an issue with the city? If the front setback were reduced to twelve instead of fifteen? We're talking the same three feet, it's just putting in a different.
I will amend my, I will amend my. Sorry, my, my motion.
Is that?
Uh, we're unable to, to what the community wants. Uh, we wanna, we wanna fit in, make sure it's.
Certainly, I will amend Eric's amendment.
And I will second it, that we, we will give you three feet on the street side.
Yeah, we're just trying to.
And maintain the ten feet on the other.
I'm just.
We're absolutely good.
Okay.
Okay, we got a bit?
It's another variance. Does he have three files?
Well, let me get this motion out, then we can discuss the motion. The amendment to the motion is. Um, yeah, amendment to the amendment to the motion is.
We require the ten foot setbacks stay as it's written, and we will take three feet off of the front if requested.
Okay, and there's a second on that. Any more discussion?
Yes.
Did you say you're building this as rental?
No, to sell. We could build it as a rental, but my preference is to sell it.
The only thing I'm thinking that. Lewis County doesn't have any control of that, that's. I don't care if you build a house there, but I think. It's gonna have to go through.
It's a city, your state has control over that. The city has control over it.
Yeah, unless it's a shoreline, by the United States government.
And well.
In nineteen forty-two. And that was still in, I don't know, but, you know, back then, it was still the city of Cleveland, town, you know. Yeah, it was kinda.
I mean, that's.
Their development.
So you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so you're saying is it built a lot, right? That's, that's.
Way I go through a whole lot of stuff there.
Yeah.
So with the setbacks and all the numbers. He's still okay to build there. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah.
It's really legal. What are you saying?
So do we have any expertise as to whether or not giving this three foot? Twelve foot setback is going to be a potential problem for the city?
Right. Hang on, but my question.
I didn't hear the question.
Okay, is that a setback, is that illegal?
The front.
The front part.
Instead of fifteen, make it as well.
I think there's probably ordinance that you would have to amend. The ordinance. Right, so, and that would get, you guys, if you wanna do that or not, I don't know how white the street is.
It's an aesthetic.
It's an aesthetic thing.
I mean, also, I mean, we have to think about this too, I mean, if we're, if we're putting the, the house. Twelve feet closer to the street, so.
No, no, no.
Three feet, three feet closer to the street does not mean that those cars are gonna be.
It's twelve feet and then the street starts.
Twelve feet and then the street starts.
Well, there'd be plenty of parking.
Or there'd be parked in the street like here.
It'd be kinda hard to fit the log truck and the cars in this quality at this amount of time.
Why just park there, cause it'll be, I can park it, right?
Just thought it'd be hard.
That's not why, that's not why I don't put you to build there, I'm just saying, if the United States government. Hit all that, then I would really check it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if that's the case, that is the case, somebody will.
And it's a lot of.
I mean, I'd be prepared for that, the government, given the way it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we did just turn somebody down, although their GIS. So, it was very different.
It's not a built a lot, then, I'm gonna say, or use a four block estimate. I'd be go with it, it would be done, that would be a lot.
Who approves all the buildings?
All the building permits, the, the city approves the, the layout. And apparently it improves the structure as well, but the bulk of the city, the city is actually working on taking. What about, gee, that's the city.
Yeah.
You guys, it's basically just the, the cross eyes and values.
We got a question, first.
Did we make a, a decision, did they say that it, was it a single dwelling?
Single.
Okay, so it wasn't gonna be like apartments or duplex?
A thousand and thirty-two square feet, three bed, two bath, kitchen, dining room and living room, two car driveway, that's it.
Your new best friend neighbor.
Yeah, the city, I think we got the city, this is, right?
You're gonna knock those fir trees down?
I don't want to, I don't wanna cut anything.
That's good.
No, I do want the trees, you know? I assume that's why you're on the west side lot anyway, downhill.
Yeah.
So would you be digging into the banks at all?
No.
But then that answers some of the questions already. Okay. Is there any other question? Is there any other question?
There's a plan to shift it all the way to the west side of that lot.
The village.
The west side.
Yeah, where the village.
Yeah, okay.
You can build it like that if though, as long as it means.
As long as.
Let's say we plant the twelve foot there. And then can't, they have to reapply for it.
Right. We're denying if we if if the variance gets before us denied, it's denied. That's the end of that part. Then you would apply for a variance. On the ground side.
Okay, can I do a what if now?
Let's say.
Everyone else is.
Reapply as announced for the twelve foot front here. And then it's determined that the lot is not built. Is that variance permanently attached to that property or is it contingent on it being?
I think we can decide that at the time the motion's made.
Yeah, after that variance comes before us, it's three feet.
Okay.
On the ground.
So. That's it? That's your last question? Okay. So we have amendment to the amendment, probably to the next.
Does it sound like it's either need to be amended?
It doesn't seem like it's need to be amended. All we gotta do is reject it. And we'll go through that again, hopefully shorter than what we've had announced before. Would you have time? Anyway, the motion, so the right of the rightful motion of denying the seven feet.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
And he's gotta come back to different.
Correct.
Application, correct?
Correct. I I did, I did, I I like you have. You have a motion on the floor that amends a motion. And so, I mean. Yes. We have to withdraw all of that and make a motion or an amendment for that.
Okay, okay. Like like Joe just said, we can reject amendments and vote on the main motion. Okay? I'm rejecting the main.
You can't.
Eric has to.
I'm just amending my motion to be back to the original motion.
There you go. Which was what?
Which is that we deny that. And everybody votes no. It's dead.
That's one way to do it.
Then reaffirm the original motion, then you vote on it. I want both those paths, right?
So. We reject.
One more mind.
We reject.
Vote on the amendment. And reject it.
Vote on the amendment. The all of them, that's gonna be discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh my god.
Reject. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. There we go. All those opposed? Okay, motion aye. Now we can hammer the motion, let's go back to the. And deny it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Where are we voting on that?
You're voting to deny to deny the ten feet there.
Re-say the original.
Devon? Can you read the original one please?
Eric motion to the. Aye.
Her motion is to deny the variance.
Okay, the motion is to deny the variance. We need to approve that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Got it? Okay. Let's move on to our last and hopefully least item. But I don't know that yet. It could be long. Police services dash Napa line. What I have. I yell sheet, you guys read all this? Council Napa line.
Yeah.
We don't need to read all that.
Wait, we, I mean, you could just give a, I mean, you could, but you could just um like sort of give out. What's going on, yeah, publicly state what, you know, that we met with them and this is the whatever, this is the discussion. What's going on, what's happening, however you wanna do that, it's up to you.
We need to decide if we want to. But I think you know, go out to put an ad out for police chief. Or do you want to pursue the contract?
Right, I think he was just gonna sort of update the public on what what we're actually having down. Via, I mean, his minutes from Napa line.
Oh.
So that's what he and and Eric's looking for in her package. I I thought it was in here, I just missed where I saw it.
The minutes are in it, the minutes are top.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
They're there somewhere.
Yes, the minutes are.
They're the second ones.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the justice involved, everybody who doesn't have one of these yellow sheets, we're good. We had a discussion with that one and uh and our council met with their council, our mayor met with their mayor to discuss combination of police forces. Right now, Sam's last day, we tomorrow meet our police chief and with the police chief gone, we cannot get reserves. To hire on to patrol Toledo. And that being said, we lost our only other officer, he give two weeks notice tonight, so we have nobody. To patrol our streets. And Napa line's approached us and they're told he's hiring two more guys there, well, obviously one of them are. Um now that I know this. Um to combine the two cities, there'll be six officers, there'll be no cop time, no overtime. And they'll save a lot of money to us because we were paying cop time now. For protection, there'll be uh twenty-four seven coverage, that means what that means. Explained to me by the sheriff of the county and the city of Napa line is that there'll be an officer in a car, either in Napa line or Toledo. Ground in the car. So in other words, if there's a call out, that now the officer has to get out of there, put his clothes on, walk out the car, do this, do that, by the time he gets here, it can be two hours. And the criminal or or whatever the thing is happening can already be done over and somebody died. We don't want that. We want the service immediately as possible, as close as possible to get. That's what I mean by twenty-four seven coverage, there'll be some officer either in Toledo or Napa line with. In the in the car ready to fracture. That being said, I liked the idea a lot of us combining because right now, the city of Winlock. Is up there waits for an officer, they're gonna hire for thirty thirty bucks an hour and they have no op, no applications, well, it's been out like four weeks. We we can't get reserve, we can't hire reserves. We can't even get advocates for a chief's job. So instead of trying to go through and find somebody. My recommendation highly. Combine forces and have the coverage that we had years ago in Black and White Crews of us in Winlock working together, we at that time. Uh we're alive here in Toledo with Winlock, we saved each city fifty thousand dollars. We saved the the crime rate went down to almost, well, I can't say zero, but it went down a lot. The coverage was excellent, twenty-three out of twenty-four hours a day was the coverage that we have on record. And now, all of a sudden, we gotta throw in a gas bill that could go higher in heck because now you're gonna go back to Napa line to Toledo, back forth, that's gonna cost us some money. There's already cities going back to bicycles and horses because of the gas prices, I don't really wanna go back that far. But if we combine with Napa line, I don't have to look for any more officers, I don't have to look for any more chiefs, because John Brock leader will be running it. And he, that's the one who runs running between Toledo and Winlock, he did an excellent job. And what we're gonna have, I mean, there's no pun intended, we're gonna have one chief, lots of civilians to cover our towns in most. In most cities, because we gotta prepare for the future, there's gonna be a hundred homes right now. Soon, within the next five years, right up here on top of the hill. I know, and we have, they have permits for twelve hundred homes in Winlock. And where do you think some of those kids are gonna go to school at? Are we gonna transfer here or where? Anyway, we're just trying to get prepared, you know? And right now, I'm worried about protection of my city and the rest of the city for the rest of the public. Because we just lost two fine gentlemen that. It's gonna be harder to place, but. We have to do something almost, and I don't wanna force this on people or or. The staff, but what are we gonna, what are we gonna do here? What's your comment? Tell me something.
Well, I understand that.
Need motion? Sam, sir, did you wanna say that?
Not a pun. Okay. Only reason my luck is because I'm doing the chief job that pays substantially more money than I meant the last five years of my retirement, prior to retiring.
And you're not going to that one?
No, I'm going to a clinic.
Okay.
Okay.
This will make sure you weren't going to that.
And um so that's why I do my left, I'm just staying here.
What's the course right now? Are you asking comments? To proceed with the combination?
Yes. We need a motion proceed.
Then you can have the motion.
Are you making a motion, Kevin?
Sure. I I move that based on our meeting. With uh. Laboratory meeting with Napa line. That we proceed with the. Route of combining. Our police budgets and. Police force.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Just moving second, any more discussion?
I have a concern.
Go ahead.
Are are we eventually going to amend with Napa line? That was my concern.
No.
No.
I don't.
No.
I mean, we didn't actually do one. We made that work.
I I understand that, but all of our employees, former employees are heading to Napa lines. Oh no, which has put us in the sticks that we're in right now.
We can be getting some employees back to Toledo if they work for Napa line after we combine.
Like you have poor knowledge coming back.
Yeah, maybe we will.
And you're talking about the police force, not the entire go, two governments.
I get that, but that's what I'm saying. I understand that concern, however, it's a police force and we're talking about the. The safety of the city and not necessarily the governance of the city or um the running of the city.
The sovereignty.
The sovereignty of the city, it's the, it's purely the um. Covering the the safety of the city, I.
Well, the coverage would be twenty-four seven.
And and the 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 police chief of uh Napa line was our police chief of uh Toledo for almost twenty years. So he has intimate knowledge of Toledo and the folks in Toledo. Um. To Toledo, um who has backgrounds here, um and also who have connections in different cities as well. So his his knowledge, I think, is is very useful. Um and he also, you know, has connections in uh larger cities and so I think. I really think it would be a very uh wise move on our part to um to. Be. In. I wish I knew a big, uh more fancier than can do, but.
Just wanna pursue.
Yeah, pursue a path with.
Right now, that's what we're talking about, pursuing it. And we got a motion on the floor, we discussed it, so let's move on. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Know of any business, unfinished business? I do? What?
The bluegrass festival request.
I made a motion that approved uh.
Bluegrass.
General conference uh request for the park um Wednesday to.
Yes.
For thirteen hundred dollars for the bluegrass festival. It was such a great uh thing for the community last year and it was.
Okay, is there a second on that?
On second to eleven. Was that a motion?
Yes. I know. I'm a rambler.
That was a motion on the floor and also seconded, any more discussion on the. Billings first? Now we've had these camera slots being reserved for a long time, is that gonna affect?
Those wrong. There were a couple reservations and Jill went them around. So it's all.
They're good. They're all good.
They're all good.
They're taken care of.
Didn't have a problem last year and I got taken care of.
Yeah, there's a dumpster over there and they were pretty good back then.
They cleaned up everything too.
Okay, so essentially. We're getting a thirteen hundred dollar fee.
Yeah.
Um they are collecting all of the entrance and camping fees.
They're collecting.
And they keep that.
Yes. They have to make some money. And we make the thirteen hundred, yeah, we have to supply plenty of restaurants twice a day.
They also um bring music to the town and um.
Lots of people.
Yes.
People spend money on our stores.
Yep.
And then really last year, the reason I came to the high school is you know, it's time to see all that behind the grade school or high school hasn't taken effect yet. And they're afraid of all the money they put in with that high school, the doctor care that. Just the one festival, so that's why the general wants to come back to Toledo Parks and we had a great time last year with them, I was there. And uh people really enjoyed themselves, so I've been said, let's move on. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Devon, is there anything else on this? Are you going down to the bottom? Marley and Brett. Is there anywhere Marley and Brett? Red here.
You mentioned the lots up above, Eddie.
Yes, we have.
There's plus there's another two hundred homes on rent next door to that.
The source is probably.
Right.
Yeah.
Who approves? Is this part of the city now?
This part that goes through the water is an extent of the city, yes.
Okay, have you guys?
The part beyond that is not.
Have you done a long-term impact on the community, schools and the city, how that's gonna affect us?
The schools, I talked with us and he's prepared for at least two hundred more students in my high school. Plus the middle school and the grade school would not be efficient for the families with kids that were coming in. We don't know how many that's gonna be. Nobody knows that, but if you figure two kids per household, that's a lot of kids coming back.
Well, if you're figuring Abiscotic Lutheran households, you're gonna be figuring five to six.
Okay, and how many?
Can't figure that.
Yeah, you can't. Just two.
I'm just saying, who's gonna be building up there and who's those houses gonna be sold?
And when are they gonna provide their own school, which is also the norm?
They said they're not going to.
Is there anyone gonna be homeschool?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Well, you know, as as the male feels older into sophomore year, they go alternative school because they go to the vocational.
Okay.
Programs with their families.
Okay.
So they're gonna, is that gonna be city water sewer?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have that capacity.
Yes.
What about the one behind it that's coming into two hundred homes? We don't have enough water for that yet.
We might have to do something with the water, like put a water tower, possibly a Toledo Tales property to subsidize the water that's gonna be used up there.
Is the developer paying any impact fees?
I think they are, but I'm not sure.
They're most likely paying for all the cost to move the water up.
Water.
That's it, no impact on the schools, roads. Uh the ice department, fire department as well.
We don't even have an application.
Yeah, we we're not to that point yet, but.
Well, I'm just saying, let's try to look ahead a little.
Yeah, I get that.
It has been brought up.
We have a very good, we have a very good planner that we retain, uh he works with Kalama. That he's very, very good. Okay, because. If you're familiar with the Richfield battleground area, the problems are heavy down there now, probably not. If you're familiar with the Richfield battleground area, the problems they're having down there now, probably not. Maybe somebody, Kathy. We have a very strong.
But that start is fifteen years ago.
Right.
Right, when the housing dropped, that's when they built the five hundred homes.
Right, well, they built the morning camp place. Their school quality and battleground, that up the best, Richfield is still there, but they done sold it. Right at the capacity now, they're talking about running a split shift. They're talking, oh, maybe this where Toledo got the idea about starting school at seven o'clock in the morning. Because that's what they're talking about, this job, run the two shifts. They cannot, and, and we, last time we tried to pass a levy for a new school, which wasn't completely a new school, we had trouble. And we just passed that levy, so we have to expand our schools, try to develop or pass a capital building budget. Maybe some concerns, I think you're going too fast. I think you need to slow up, take a look what's happening here. I don't wanna see us turn into a tent valley, which with all the development going on in Winlock, that's way Toledo is, maybe that's what Toledo wants. I'm not for that. I think we need to take a harder look at these developments. Just because they're coming in, making all these big promises, they build these houses, they're gone. And we not consider us friends, we are not being nice in the process, we have expectations from them, and we're being great on term life. I, I, I don't want us to grow too fast as well. Right, but I mean, you're talking ninety homes, you're talking two hundred homes, you're talking all the building going on and whatnot. You're talking about the development, Dick Winters property.
Yeah.
And all the way out to. Yes.
And Napa line.
The one, the one on the backside of Swanson Place is still have, they're, they're working on annexing into the Toledo city limits, but. Right now, that is not gonna prove by anybody, and we do.
Where does the growth management add on this? That's all farmland up there, you guys have turned that into development. It's, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's why we set up the growth manager, so you save some of this farmland. We're, we're. That's all in our growth. Right, I know. So it's actually already was. Right, it was gone here years ago, in Arizona.
It was more than fifteen years ago.
But I mean, you guys still have control over that, because we're gonna be a city from here to the freeway.
Yeah.
Yes. And that's what I'm saying, you need to slow down, take a look at some of this.
I know that we actually are, we're going at a slow pace, we have strict things that we have.
Down the number of time, most likely will again.
Yeah.
Good, I hope you do, Eric. I'm really, really trying hard. And it is, not making a one-year, two-year plan, they could, a development is gonna be like. So many houses were five years, then the next space, then the next.
Right now, Tom, the one over Winlock, they're building four houses a year. Yeah, that's what we're doing right now, I just talked.
And that development?
And that development over Winlock, the mayor told me, they're only, they're only building four houses a year.
Which development?
Four.
There's several, foundation already up there.
Well, this guy already told me.
Yeah, but I mean, my stepmother lives there, I mean, I've been ordered to visit her.
Well, they just, I just approved. They just approved four hundred building permits for Winlock.
That's right, so that's gonna be crazy.
That's gonna be absolutely great.
It's gonna be a nightmare here on our schools, I don't care what Chris President. Yeah. We, we have to figure that out, because we can't afford everybody's force, right, I mean, we're, we're so small that, that we, there's, there's gotta be a fine line in there somewhere. One of the reasons you don't have the funding is you don't have the business district. We need for commercial. And you need people here in order to support the commercial, so it definitely is a push before you. Well, you don't want me to say what I. Yeah, we do, you need to speak up. I, I'd love to hear what you'll say. Cause that's.
This is my third time I'm going to, once in Arizona, once in Maple Valley, Black Diamond.
Yeah.
Right, it, it's here, it's not coming, it's here, it's gonna happen in a flash. So five oh five needs a third lane, all the utilities and stuff need to be put in, so they're not tearing it up. Every time somebody wants to develop, the P U D has bought property over there in Winlock. To put in another main station, so they can service all these ho, these hotels that are coming. And warehouses and everything that's come. And there's no getting around, my recommendation to the school would be, they buy that property that you're talking about, two hundred houses. Because they're gonna need new schools that make that a school complex. Up there, of that Jomo property. Everything on the west side of Plum Run is going to be commercial properties or light industrial, because the house is starting out. Now, that Swanson property is gonna be strip malls right in there for doctors and dentists and stuff. Everything going on, on I five. Is going to be light industrial, commercial and high-density residential. So, that road is gonna be two blocks in about two or three years. And all this construction, they're gonna have to do on there continually, if they don't build it out now. It's gonna be painful for the next fifteen, twenty years. They will tear it up, every time you think they're done, they're going to tear it up. And just getting water and sewer out there is not the whole issue, I mean. The Toledo Tales getting the funding. Lewis County P U D is getting the funding, the county's gonna be on board. There are so many pieces working that nobody understands. It's gonna be amazing what happens, uh, Black Diamonds, they, excuse me, they had ten thousand houses coming in. And they were building amenities like a new school and a new church and a new, uh, community center, stuff like that. They didn't want it, because the people just didn't want the change, they voted in a new council, they stopped it all. And the developers said, fine, we're building our houses anyway, you can't stop that. But you're gonna pay to fix the roads, you're gonna pay to build out the infrastructure, you're gonna pay for your own community centers. All that was the developers had offered in the whole river. So, you gotta get your feet out in front of this, like I say, quickly. In Clean Creek, when I moved in there, in Arizona, there was six thousand, six thousand people. It was the fastest growing place in the nation when I moved in there in two thousand and six. But two thousand and ten was over twenty-five thousand people. And, and I had a house on Main three, but we saw the twenty-two cars an hour come up. Which came to about thirty-five cars a minute after that, so, needless to say, I don't own that property. So, it's here, it's not coming, it's here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
We're on par.
Any other comments? Now's the time.
Uh, the last thing I heard on exit sixty is the girders are supposed to be.
What made?
The girders to fix that exit are supposed to be, are supposed to be here by the thirtieth. So, I don't have heard that they have the gird, but it's probably gonna take another two to fix plus for them to do that, so. Didn't get a better answer out of the state.
I still have a few why they shut down briefly.
The more I, the more I cried at the mayor's being to the state officials, I did get the truck line fixed. Because I kept saying, every time I go in that damn thing, I lost full speed, I don't even have full speed, so I mean, there you go.
They need to buy that, right?
I was, Joe, I've been saying that. They got bridges, they got overpass.
They're just gonna waste more.
They're gonna fry you to death.
The overpass, and then they're gonna tear it out.
The new four overpass bridge is gonna, right, it takes a whole, about billions of dollars, anyway, Rachel, you wanna say something?
Yes, I'm Rachel Phillips from a couple businesses over there. Um, what I'm here asking for is, um, the Southwest County Chamber Commerce has. Started up again after being shut down for eight years and the chamber were, were getting it up and running. The, um, in the past, the chamber office was run in my office, it used my telephone number, my office, my field box, I donated everything to the chamber back then. Now I wanna do the same thing again. So, this year they have their own, this time they have their own field box, but I have gotten a phone number for the chamber, they're not using mine this time. But now that there are four businesses in that one building with still two and a half people, because there is no one monitoring that one except for me. They, uh, the city is now gonna charge me for two water bills. So we still have two and a half people in the building. And I'm gonna be billed, the chamber's gonna be billed for a water bill and I'm billed for a water bill. So, my issue is there's no more people using the bathroom. We use about a thousand gallons every two months as it is now, we pay the same as everybody else, but now I'm gonna be double billed. For the water, because a year low three, the chamber makes four. And Glenda, tax lady, she's not even there part-time, I haven't seen her in days. And when she comes in, she's there for fifteen minutes and she's gone. So, her business is very minimal, the chamber, the phone isn't heavy, ring it. And, uh, then it's just myself with my full-time employee, the coffee shop has a part-time employee, the rest of us, we volunteer in the pop shop. So, that's my issue, I have two water bills and we have no more people using the bathroom, washing their hands, taking a bath, doing anything in there. So that is, that's, that's a concern to me. When did the two start? July first? July first. Yeah, the phone just got turned on, I don't know, two weeks ago or something like that. It's a phone that sits on a file cabinet in a separate office that nobody occupies. Well, Glenda does, but she's not there, so the phone is there. And if it rings, I'll answer.
When did the decision come from, to go from one to two?
So is it possible for us to, why do we do that, do you know? Who, who made that decision?
To go from one to two?
It was something in the ordinance. Oh, while ago, I can't remember why we changed it, but there was a reason. So there's two meters? No, there's an elevator. No. I mean, the chamber is, it's a nonprofit, it's strictly, all of us coordinators, we're all volunteers. Um, I was excited to be on the board again and bring it back up again after the years I was on it, I was tired of all that. But it does use my address.
They could do a very astrolab.
It'd be good to look back and see that ordinance that set this in motion to happen this year, July first. And what created that?
I think it's because they, they asked, they had enough for businesses.
Yes, it was up to three, which the coffee shop, the insurance and, uh, uh, G R T tax, now we're adding the chamber, which is four, even though we're still the same people. Even though the. We're non-profit and there's nobody, yes, if the phone rings, I'm gonna.
Or if it's a nonprofit, it's a separate bill. It does, that's what the ordinance says, so, to look at the ordinance and change it is what needs to happen.
Yeah.
So, we can do that next time, if you can put it on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
We'll look at it and go back and work from there.
Yes, our next chamber luncheon, by the way, it happens to be at dawn, it's like that, you know, it's about one fifty-one, and it's on, it's at thirty in the house. All right, yeah, okay.